December 1st of 2025 at 6:30 PM. Can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Kinnane.
Present.
Trustee Mills. Trustee Noel.
Present.
Trustee Palafis.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present. Anybody please rise for Pledge of Allegiance?
Trustee Mill, you want us to lead this?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public that wants to, in the audience, who wants to make a comment on anything? Maybe once, twice, three times, we'll move on. We do have a couple of interviews, and we'll start with Ms. Suzie Whipple. Suzie, you want to come on up and tell us a little about yourself?
Good evening. My name is Suzie Whipple. I am a retired schoolteacher. I am currently in the wine business. I've been doing the wine industry for the last almost 11 years. I was a foreign exchange student to France, quite near Angoulême, which is one of the reasons why I'm interested in the Sister Cities Committee. One of my last teaching assignments, last seven years, was French. And I lived about 45 minutes from Angoulême. And if any of you have been around long enough for the Sister Cities, or did the event when the chef worked with the culinary students at the Eiffel Bistro in the Arboretum of South Barrington, I was working there and was one of the guests, the people who welcomed the guests.
Great. You have any questions, Trustee Kinnane?
Not at this time. I just want to say thank you for your interest in applying for the Sister Cities Commission.
Trustee Arnett?
No, and I think you will be an added asset to that commission. So, thank you very much.
Trustee Stanton?
Where did you teach?
I was in the Kankakee School District initially, and then I taught in U46. And I had about 27 years of teaching, mostly special education, behavior disorder, learning disability, but the last seven years was French.
Interesting. And you were able to retire with a full pension or not?
Oh, yeah. I retired quite a few years ago, actually.
Okay, great. All right, that's it.
Okay. Trustee Noel, yes.
I have nothing other than welcome, and you'll be a great addition to the, you know, commission. So, thanks for thinking of us.
Trustee Palafis, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. Welcome, Suzie. Sorry I couldn't be there in person, it was under the weather tonight. But my wife grew up in neighboring Peatone, so not far from your Kankakee roots there. And just wanted to let you know, we're excited to have you.
Okay, thank you.
Have you been to any of the city meetings too, or?
No, I just did the event on the 14th of November.
Okay. Very good. Well, we'll make the appointment on December 15th, the next board meeting. You don't have to be there, but you will be notified that you've been appointed formally
Okay.
by the board, and go on from there. Thank you very much for your interest.
Merci beaucoup.
Merci. Is there some guy named Greg Ring in the room? Come on up, Greg.
Greg, say. I'm ready for a long walk.
Thought you joined the press there for a minute. We used to have press in our meetings.
I get my steps in.
So, you're willing to come back, huh?
Yeah, I guess so. I mean, for those that may or may not know me, I'm Greg Ring. Retired in June, actually, so I've got a little more free time on my hands. I don't have to worry about work bugging me in the back of my mind. Former Planning Zoning Commissioner for the village. Enjoyed working on that for quite a long time, and been in discussions with Bill, and it's like I'd like to get re-involved. And I believe there's an opportunity potentially for the Economic Development Commission.
Right.
That's right, I mean.
Okay. Trustee Noel, got any questions?
Uh, no, other than welcome back.
Hi.
Trustee Palafis.
Greg Ring, it's glad to have you back.
Um, congratulations on your wedding as well.
Yeah.
Glad you could be there tonight.
Retired and got married all within
Yeah, got a little
Less than weeks.
Got a little married here in July, too, so.
We're happy to have you back.
Yeah, it's great.
Thank you, Gary.
Stanton?
Uh, can you be there on Wednesday for our meeting?
Wednesdays? How often are these meetings, may I?
Uh, every four, or every three months, yeah, every three months.
I can probably find a way to squeeze it.
It's two o'clock.
As long as it doesn't interrupt in a tea time.
It's two o'clock Wednesday, and it's in the back there.
Yeah, I know that. I don't anticipate any problems on Wednesdays.
Okay.
Especially at two o'clock or at this point without working.
Greg won't be golfing at two o'clock on the third.
Well, I could play before or after.
Not in the snow, you wouldn't.
He's got orange balls, he could do it. Trustee Arnett?
Nothing for me, welcome back.
Thanks.
Trustee Kinnane?
Nothing for me, welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thanks, Greg, and you'll be obviously notified in the mail and officiously and all that, but come to the meeting on the third if you can make it.
On the third?
Third.
Okay.
It's Wednesday at two.
At two o'clock?
Yep.
I'm gonna check it right now, just to make sure, because, yeah, should be able to make that out.
Okay, great. Good to see you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Good to see everybody.
Thank you.
You, too.
We have no additional business, so Chair would take a motion to adjourn. So, second. A motion with a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. I'd like to call to order the Liquor Commission hearing of December 1st, 2025 at 6:50 PM. Can you, first off, I'd like to, uh, yeah, call the role, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McLeod?
Present.
Commissioner Palafis?
Present.
Commissioner Stanton?
Present.
Okay. Chair would accept a motion to allow Trustee, Commissioner Palafis to attend telephonically?
So moved.
Second.
With a motion, we have a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Do you have any, any commissioners have any questions for the petitioner?
No, sir.
I do not.
Okay, I don't either. Does the petitioner have any que, first off, as a petitioner here?
Yes.
Come on up and just introduce yourself for the record.
For the record, Mark Mueller, owner of Ice Mel Bacon Barbecue and soon-to-be Rope the Moon Catering and Events.
Okay, do you have any questions for the Liquor Commission?
I do not.
Okay.
Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Yep, congratulations. Chair would accept a motion to release a license to the petitioner?
So moved.
A second. We have a motion, we have a second. Uh, can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner McLeod?
Aye.
Commissioner Palafis?
Aye.
Commissioner Stanton?
Aye.
Motion carried. Chair would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second. We have a motion, we have a second to adjourn, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried, thank you. I'd like to call the public hearing to order on December 1st, 2025 at 6:55 PM. And this is the public hearing on the 2026 proposed village budget. Can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Uh, Trustee Noel?
Present.
Trustee Palafis?
Present.
Trustee Mills? Trustee Stanton?
Present.
Trustee Arnett?
Present.
Trustee Kinnane?
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present. Uh, just for the record, Chair accept a motion to allow Trustee Palafis to attend the meeting telephonically?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, it's carried. Move on to the purpose of the meeting, and that is for the FY 2026 proposed budget. Manager Palm, did you want to speak to this?
I do. Pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/8-2-9.9, the village is required to meet certain requirements before the adoption of its annual budget. First, it must make its tentative budget available for public inspection at least 10 days before its passage. Second, a public hearing shall be held to allow for public comment on the budget, and said notification of the public hearing should appear in a newspaper of local circulation at least seven days prior to the public hearing. The village has complied with all these requirements. Notice regarding the public hearing was published in the November 14th, 2025 Daily Herald. Once the public hearing is concluded, the village may adopt the budget at tonight's village board meeting as presented or amended without any further notice, inspection, or hearing. For the record, the 2026 annual budget has, across all funds, has expenses of $228,899,230. And in the general fund, expenses of $85,185,510. And now, Mr. Mayor, if anyone from the public wanted to address the board on the budget, this would be the time to do so.
Anybody?
These people, these people aren't here for the budget?
Twice, three times. No, I think the police department's got something going on.
Yeah.
Heard rumors of it, in fact. Anybody on the board have any questions or comments, or seeing none? Uh, Chair accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. The board meeting will start at seven o'clock. I'd like to call the Wednesday scheduled village board meeting of December 1st, 2025 to order at 7:00 PM. Can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett?
Present.
Trustee Kinnane?
Present.
Trustee Mills? Trustee Noel?
Present.
Trustee Palafis?
Present.
Trustee Stanton?
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present. Chair accept a motion to allow Trustee Palafis to attend this meeting electronically?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. Anybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, Trustee Arnett?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trustee Arnett. Move on to the next item, public comment. Does anybody wish to make any remarks to the village board or the village staff at this point in time? Does anybody sign up? No one signed up? Maybe once, twice, three times, and move on. Chair would accept a motion to approve, well, we've got a lot of minutes to prove, let's put it that way. Chair accept a motion to approve the minutes of the village board meeting of November 17th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
With a motion, we have a second. Uh, any discussion on these? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. A chair accept a motion to approve and release the village board meetings of February 17th, 2025, the village board executive session, et cetera. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Move to the second, any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. All these minutes for the executive sessions have been gone through by the board in, uh, in executive session prior to this meeting. Uh, we got D, the, um, C, we got the executive session minutes of March 3rd, 2025, approve and release.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. Village Board Executive Session Minutes of 4/7/2025, approve and release, release item B only. Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any questions on these concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. E, Village Board Executive Session of 4/14/2025, approve or not release? Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. F, Village Board Executive Session of 5/5/2025, approve and release? Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. The village board executive session of 6/2/2025, approve or not release? Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion on this one? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. H, Village Board Executive Session of 8/4/2025, approve and release?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion on this one? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. I, Village Board Executive Session 8/18/2025, approve and not release? Chair would accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion on this one? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. Move on to a consent agenda, amnestous vote, Chair would accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second on the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda consist of the following. A, approval of the agenda. B, approval of the schedule of bills for 12/1/2025 in the amount of $3,830,273.9. C, approval of an ordinance adopted in budget for all corporate purposes of the Village of Hoffman Estates, Cook County, Illinois, in lieu of the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of January 2026 and ending on the 31st day of December 2026. D, approval of an ordinance authorizing the levying collection of taxes for the corporate and municipal purposes of the Village of Hoffman Estates for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of January 2026 and ending on the 31st day of December 2026. E, approval of an ordinance abating a portion of the 2025 tax levy, Series 2015A and 2015C taxable general obligation refunding bonds. F, approval of an ordinance abating a portion of the 2025 tax levy, Series 2015B general obligation bonds. G, approval of an ordinance abating a portion of the 2025 tax levy, Series 2017A and 2017B general obligation bonds. H, approval of an ordinance abating a portion of the 2025 tax levy, Series 2018 general obligation refunding bonds. I, approval of an ordinance abating a portion of the 2025 tax levy, Series 2019 general obligation bonds. J, approval of an ordinance abating a portion of the 2025 tax levy, Series 2024 general obligation bonds. K, approval of an ordinance accepting public improvements for 1721 Moonlake Boulevard Seasons Apartments. L, approval of a resolution authorizing agreement with Morton Salt for the purchase of roads sold in the amount of $228,378. M, approval of a resolution authorizing purchase of vehicle upfitting from Henderson Truck Equipment, Gilberts, Illinois, Illinois, in an amount of $332,459.2. N, approval of a resolution authorizing agreement with Sea Orbital Group Inc. for design engineering for the 2025 lift station assessment in an amount not to exceed $155,487.94. O, authorization to approve change order number three for construction services for Pfizer Lift Station improvements to Martin Construction, Inc. of Elgin, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $29,709.22. P, approval of a license agreement with Commonwealth Edison Company, ComEd, for underground electric distribution lines in the Chatham Drive, XX Drive, Beacon Point Drive, Beverly Road, and Trillium Boulevard rights of way. Does anybody want any of these items pulled? Uh, seeing none, can you call the role, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane?
Aye.
Trustee Noel?
Aye.
Trustee Palafis? Trustee Trustee Stanton?
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. I'll move on to President's Report. I believe the police department has some business to conduct, Chief?
Mayor and Board, I'm happy to announce that we have two promotions tonight. The first one will be Sergeant Mark Wondolkowski to Commander. Mark, do you want to come up with your family?
You all brought your own cheering squad, Mark.
I did, I did.
It's great today when we see people from the ranks move on up and continue the great progress that we've made in Hoffman Estates. We have the finest police department in the world, bar none. And it's because of folks like you that we have that, and all the people who serve. You want to get to it, Mark?
Sure, let's do it.
I'm Mark Wondolkowski.
I'm Mark Wondolkowski.
Having been appointed to the office of?
Been appointed to the office of?
Police Commander.
Police Commander.
In the Village of Hoffman Estates.
In the Village of Hoffman Estates.
The County of Cook.
In the County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution?
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
The United States.
Constitution?
The Constitution.
The state of Illinois?
The state of Illinois.
I will faithfully discharge the duties?
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Commander?
Of the office of Commander.
According?
According.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Commander. Do you want, do you want to introduce everybody, Mark?
Sure. Uh, this is my daughter Josie, my oldest son Max, my girlfriend Andrea, my sister Renee, and my mother Linda.
Good, welcome to all of you. Want to make this official, Mark?
Let's make it official.
Why don't you sign it right there? You have a very nice bed. This is Commander Hoffman Estates Police Department, who's going to attach it? Good job. Good job, boy. Commander Mark Wondolkowski in this man.
Want to get in it, there?
Why don't you get one without?
The one, two, three.
Put me on the edge, you can cut me out.
All right. There we go, one, two.
Yeah.
Mark, do you want to shake him?
Yeah. Bring everybody else over.
Follow along, if you say hi to him.
It can help shake Palafis' hand. Wait, Tom, I'm gonna groovy. Like, yeah, Mark. What picture?
Their picture? Bill? Sister.
Oh, sorry. Talk to me. Sorry about that.
All right, here we go.
Thank you. Our second promotion will be Officer Luis Zavala to Sergeant. Luis, bring your family up.
Get on, Luis.
There's some recording.
I figured as much. Want to introduce everybody, Luis, including the recorders?
So here is my mother, Maria, my fiancee, Janay, my brother Anthony, brother Max, my father, Eduardo, my grandma, Mari, my aunt, Sunny, my future father-in-law, Noel, future mother-in-law, Marisol, and then my uncle back there, Antonio.
Wow. Got your own recording crew here.
Yeah.
Boy, you ready?
Ready.
I, Luis Zavala.
I, Luis Zavala.
Having been, going to the office?
Having been appointed to the office.
Of police sergeant?
Of police sergeant.
The Village of Hoffman Estates?
The Village of Hoffman Estates.
In the County of Cook?
In the County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois?
Of the state of Illinois.
I will faithfully discharge?
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office?
The duties of the office.
Of Sergeant?
Of Sergeant.
According?
According.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Sergeant. See you right here. Hey, Sergeant Luis Zavala and his family? Round of applause. Congratulations. Let's go up and, ooh, your badge. Who's going to put your badge on?
Uh, my mother is.
Mom?
Actually, still here.
Paramedics, it's fine.
Do you work for the, do you work for the police? Do you work for the police?
I work for the village.
Oh, okay, so the picture's going to be posted on the page?
Do a picture with everybody here?
They didn't give one, I'm just so after this. It'll go this way. We're going to go this way. We did.
Yeah, Luis, you stay here. Mark? Where's Mark? Where's Mark? Come on up, Mark. And all the, all the brass, yeah. Come on, Chiefs. Thank you, guys.
Arthur invited back up. Arthur invited back up.
He ain't come back, Eric. Next, next we have our lobbyist, Dan Shouman, to make a presentation on the fall veto session wrap-up and what's gonna happen in 2026.
Thank you, Mayor McLeod and trustees. And I'm honored to be here today. Dan Shouman, I'm one of the members of lobbyist team for the Village of Hoffman Estates. I lead the lobbyist team, so I had distributed to everybody a one-page update from the legislature's fall veto session, which occurred up until, basically it ended on November 1. And there was some momentous legislation that passed, and I'm just gonna give you a couple of highlights, and then I'll take questions. One was the transit reorganization bill, which was controversial for a couple of reasons. One was that they were... Some of the mayors and some of the city governments were concerned it would give this new transit agency, the Northern Illinois Transit Agency, or NITA, too much authority with no representation. They slimmed that down a little bit, so there was... It's still not perfect, but there is... Was less onerous than the original legislation, which would have basically shifted control of the board, transit boards, more to the city of Chicago. The other big highlight of this bill was a potential toll increase, which is, uh... Which was part of the compromise agreement to fund it. The way that they funded it partially was by diverting road fund money that would have gone to roads in lieu of new construction money for the tolls. So we've yet to see when that... The toll increase has not been passed yet. It's up to the tollway board, but it's likely to happen in 2026 as part of this whole reorganization. Most of the provisions don't take effect till later this year or later next year, so we're gonna be continuing to follow the implementation as it goes forward. The other big issue that came out was there was some immigration legislation that basically restricts the ability of of immigration officials in certain government locations. It was more symbolic than actually affecting the activities of ICE, but that was one of the bills that passed. Another thing that came up during the veto session was a discussion about the tier-one versus tier-two pensions. Now, there is a proposal to try to equalize the pension system between new pensioners and old pensioners. While there's... Everybody wants equitable pensions, the concern is that this could cost Hoffman Estates a significant amount of money. I think a village administrator might know. I think it's... How much is it a year if this bill passed?
I wanna say, Rachel, somewhere around a million and a half, $2 million. And again, that's annually, and that doesn't go away, so it just compounds every year after that.
So this is a bill that's an unfunded mandate on local government. It's being pushed by the unions for state employees and public employees. This is gonna come back up again in 2026. The Northwest Municipal Conference is taking a lead on negotiating. We're working with them to try to make sure if something is done, that it does not create a budget hole at a time when when we can least afford it. The other issues coming up in the future is the Bears Stadium, which is proposed for Arlington Heights. We have been working on the mayor, and I have both been pushing for what about minor league stadiums? And minor league stadiums need love also. So why should the Bears get a bailout if we don't bail out the other minor league teams? Because the White Sox and the Bears are both looking for legislation to give private companies a benefit when we have a municipally-owned facility, as does other cities such as Rosemont and Rockford. And the Rockford mayor's taking a lead on this. The mayor has been taking a lead. Mayor McLeod's been taking a lead on this, so I appreciate that. The other two issues coming up next year is, one is the TIF extension. We're gonna be working to extend the Hoffman Estates TIF, which is set to expire at the end of next year. So that's on our agenda for 2026, which is gonna be a big issue. There's also a $2 billion state deficit, so we're gonna be trying to protect local government funding. And that was basically majority of things I wanted to take. Any questions from the from the board of trustees? If you ever have any issues, you want to raise or need help with any issues with state government, please go through Village Administrator Palma, and I'm always here to help, you know, make a connection with any local government, state government. That's what we do. We're supposed to be a navigator for the village. Any questions?
Any questions for Dan?
Sure. Dan, on the toll authority, you're saying that they haven't done anything yet as far... But they are approved to hit at least 45 cents per vehicle or something like that?
Good question. I've got the exact number. Let me give it to you. It is, yes, they have the authority now to raise tolls. Here we go. It authorizes an increase in the RTA tax, and then the toll rate would increase by 45 cents per passenger vehicle. That's the... Now, this still has to be approved by the tollway board, but in my mind, to predict, that is 95% likely to happen.
I guess the other question I've got for you is, we all go through there now with no idea what we're actually paying in the tolls because we have all these passes.
Yes.
What is the toll currently that we're paying?
Okay, I need an expert opinion on that. I think it's a... Is it...
It depends where you... It's not all tolls are created equal. That I know.
Right.
That I know.
Basic ones are what? 150, 175? And if you have a pass, if you have an IPass or an RFID code, I can get you that information, though. Josie Stanton, I'll provide that for you.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
I don't know how much it would cost the average... I mean, we could look at how much it would cost the average Hoffman Estate person that going downtown and coming back. I'd have to look at that. But I'll get that for you.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm actually meeting with the tollway tomorrow, so on Wednesday about another issue, so I'll bring it up.
All right.
Put in a good word for us. Whoever invented the withholding tax and then these decoder things, government owes them a lot of tribute, I guess, because withholding, they already take the money out. As trustee Stanton said, he got the thing, and they don't even know what you're paying.
It was brilliant, right?
Yeah, it was brilliant.
Right. But you can get your information online, too. I'll say, you know, you should be able to provide that from your IPass.
Probably.
Yeah, there's an online account.
I'll let you do it for me.
Well, you want me to ask how much you owe?
No.
Thank you, though.
You have a special Stanton tax.
Right. Pay your tolls. Pay your tolls. Don't blow through.
Dan, what is the likelihood of something happening with the pension tiers, pension two tier?
I think we might get through the next election, because remember, there's a gubernatorial election in August. I mean, I'm sorry, in November, but watch out for the lame duck session, which is in January of 2027. That is bad roads ahead. Generally, nobody wants to pass a, you know, something controversial before an election, but then again, the unions want it, so the answer is at least 50-50.
Okay.
We... But we have to fight against that as a group.
Of course.
Because we can't afford it, as much as we want to equalize the system.
Well, that's why it was changed in the first place.
Right, exactly. That's why it was changed in the first place.
Anything else from anybody? No, thanks, Dan. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it. Yep. Do we have one resignation? Susan Simmons from the Sustainability Commission and Youth Commission. Chair to accept a motion.
I'll move second.
Give a motion with a second. We appreciate the service she gave. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I have a motion carried. The village is mourning the death of Ashley Springer, longtime resident of Hoffman Estates, who was also a local businessperson and owned some restaurants in the area and the box office tickets. He's a longtime resident of Hoffman Estates and a really great guy. Wasn't a whole lot going on last week after, um... Monday. It was a busy Monday, but after that, with the holiday, I hope everybody had a great day Thanksgiving, and the Bears won, beat the Super Bowl champions. That's... That's pretty epic. And that's all I have. Move on to trustee cabinet, starting with trustee Arnett.
Thank you. I did attend the friendship tree lighting, which had a great turnout, and my compliments to Public Works for their setup that night. It turned out really well. And also for your lead on all the plowing and getting ahead of our snowstorm that we just had. Nicely done. As always, you guys do a great job with that. And congratulations to Commander Wondolkowski, very well deserved, and Sergeant Zavala. Both of them, very well deserved. Two great guys, and we're so lucky to have those two. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Canane?
Thank you, Mayor. But the only thing I have is, did attend the friendship tree lighting and the fireworks. It was excellent, as always. And also, to echo my fellow trustees' comments, great job on the plowing. I think you should be giving lessons to other agencies as to how to plow roads, because it seems like the minute you get off a Hoffman road and go onto somebody else's road, it's a disaster. So thank you so much, Joe.
Okay, trustee Stanton.
Thank you. Between car issues and coming down with the virus on the 21st of November, I didn't make it to any events since our last board meeting. But I do want to congratulate Sergeant Mark Wondolkowski on his promotion to commander and Officer Luis Zavala to sergeant. That's it.
Okay, trustee Newell.
Okay, not too much either. The 19th of November, did the senior lunch and the Jawa meeting in the evening. On the 22nd, along with other trustees and the mayor and the Boy Scouts, the friendship tree lighting and the fireworks, which were absolutely amazing. And a thank you to Public Works and everyone who helped make the event. Just totally fantastic, so good job. Congrats to the two promotions tonight for commander and sergeant. And a big thank you to the Public Works, as trustee Canane had said, you know, when you're in Hoffman, the streets are awesome, and I've heard it more than once. Also, just a small little thing, the temperatures, they are talking about droppings, more inclement weather, so please just check on, you know, neighbors, your friends, family. Make sure they're all doing okay. If not, we have all kinds of services that we can help you with if you need. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Newell, and thank you for mentioning what a great job Public Works does. Trustee Plafis.
Yes, sir. Same for me. Congratulations to Commander Wondolkowski and Sergeant Zavala. Joe, great job. Dig Zittler called me and told me to congratulate you. And we're just really blessed to have your crew in our town. That's all for me.
Hey, thank you, trustee Plafis. Move on to C, village manager's report.
No report.
Hey, village clerk's report. Clerk Richter.
Not report.
Okay, move on to committee reports. General Administration Personnel, trustee Canane, what's happening?
Thank you, Mayor. And Monday, December 8, 2025, we will call the General Administration and Personnel Committee meeting to order. First item on the agenda is, we'll call the meeting to order, have a roll call to determine if we have a quorum. Second item, approval of the minutes. A, General Administration and Personnel Committee meeting minutes from November 10, 2025. Item three, we'll give the public an opportunity to comment on anything regarding this agenda. Four, there is nothing listed under old business. Five, under new business, item A, approval of an ordinance authorizing the sale of property, personal property owned by the Village of Hoffman Estates auction items. And B, discussion regarding the 2026 Village Board and Standing Committee's meeting schedule. Item six, we'll receive the cable TV monthly report, the Human Resources Management monthly report, and the Legislative Operations and Outreach monthly report. Next, the president will have an opportunity to present any items as part of his report. Eight, items in review, there are none. Nine, under other, there is nothing. And 10, we'll ask for adjournment.
Thank you, trustee Canane. Transportation Road Improvement, trustee Arnett.
Thank you. Immediately following the General Administration and Personnel Committee, we will call to order the Transportation and Road Improvement Committee. We will call to order, and followed by the approval of minutes for the 11/10/2025 Road Improvement, Transportation and Road Improvement Committee, followed by if anyone wishes to make a public comment for this committee, if there's anything in old business, we'll move to number five, new business. We have three new items. A is approval of an ordinance amending Municipal Code Section 6-2-1-HE-11-1302-A, additional no parking streets in area at 1955 Cheltenham Place and 1949 Whittingham Lane. B, approval of a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with IDOT for improvements on Illinois 72 at Huntington Boulevard. And C is approval of a resolution creating the Active Transportation Advisory Committee of the Village of Hoffman Estates. Move on to reports for information only, Transportation Division monthly report. For anything other in President's report, if there's anything in items to review or anything in other, and then we'll motion for an adjournment.
Thank you, trustee Arnett. Planning, Building, and Zoning, trustee Stanton.
Thank you. Following the Transportation Committee, we will call to order a meeting and then look for approval of the minutes once we have a quorum. And the approval of minutes will be for the 11/10/2025 meeting. We'll then go into public comment. We do not have old business. We have four items under new business. First is Bellworks RDA. Then B is approval of an ordinance granting site plan amendment for Bellworks West Side located at 2000 Center Drive. Third is the approval of an ordinance amending Chapter 8 of the Municipal Code, Residential Rental Property Licenses. And then fourth is the ordinance granting site plan amendment for a tenant change for the property at 2069 North Barrington Road. We then have three reports to be received and filed. The first is Planning Division, the second is Code Enforcement Division, and the third is the Economic Development and Tourism. Then the president has a chance to keep speaking, and after that, we have no items in review or nothing coming up in other, and then we will look to adjourn.
Thank you, trustee Stanton. Public Works Utilities, trustee Newell.
Okay, and the same day, we will be calling the Public Work and Utility Committee in order, which is, of course, December 8. We will call to order, have a roll call. We'll move on to approval of minutes from the Public Work Utility Committee of November 24, 2025. Public comment, if there is anyone, and under new business, there are three items. Approval of a resolution authorizing a contract with National Power Rodding of Chicago, Illinois for the 2025 sanitary sewer rehabilitation... I can never say that word. Project in an amount not to exceed $780,489. B, approval of a resolution authorizing a contract with Visu... How'd you say? The Visu? Sewer of Ill... Visu? Sewer of Illinois, LLC of Bridgeview, Illinois, for the 2025 storm inlet cleaning project in an amount not to exceed $55,100. C, approval of a resolution authorizing a contract with, once again, Visu Sewer of Illinois, LLC of Bridgeview, Illinois, for the 2025 storm sewer rehabilitation project in an amount not to exceed $21,94,480. Then we'll move on to the reports, Public Works Department monthly report, then the Engineering Division monthly report. If the president would like to add anything, nothing in items in review or other, and then we would adjourn.
Thank you, trustee Newell. Public Health and Safety, trustee Plafis, you can handle that for trustee Mills?
Yes, sir. Trustee Mills will call to order right after Ann has done, and we will approve the minutes from November 24, 2025. Have public comment, no old business, no new business. We'll accept all four of the reports. Have a president's report, and then we'll adjourn.
Thank you. Finance, trustee Plafis.
Same thing. We're gonna call to order right after PH&amp;S, accept the minutes from November 24. We'll have a public comment, no old business, one item under new business, which is the approval of an ordinance establishing higherback rates for police and fire personnel for the period of January 1, 2026, through December 31, 2026. We'll accept, being received, the three reports. Have a president's report if need be, and then we'll adjourn.
Thank you very much. Okay, move on to Plant Commission recommendations. Chairperson Chetwani, how are you? Good.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, and the staff. Approval of an ordinance granting a special use for the plant development for Grand Reserve of Hoffman State located at 2300 West Higgins Road. This ordinance was approved by the Plant Commission. The subject property is a vacant 7.2-acre site located within the Barrington Square Town Center Mall area, also known as a former Menard's Lot. The project is, will be divided into two-phase multi-residential project. It is going to be... Phase one will include 194 units, which will take about 18 months of construction timeframe, followed by phase two, which would include 141 units, a total of 335 units of luxury rental apartments. If this has been approved, the estimate is looking to be completed by 2030. This development includes 20,000 square feet of indoor and outdoor amenities, space including pool, gym, pickleball court, shared offices, media roof, golf stimulation, storage locker, dog walk station, and DIY rooms. Currently, the site has 330 parking spaces, but the proposal plan is to include 486 parking spaces for the residents. And the petitioners here for additional questions. Thank you.
Want to come up and testify yourself for the record, sir?
Thank you. My name is Phil Domenico, one of the owners of Synergy Construction and Development, the applicant for this project.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Trustee Stanton?
Number two, for a special use. I have some questions regarding that. Says that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Uh, says nor substantially diminish or impair the property values within the neighborhood. I agree with the finding that the values will probably increase as far as that. What I disagree with is that they may not be, uh, so non-injurious uh, to the restaurants that are actually within the shopping center right now. Some of the, uh, parking, uh, that's there, it has been used in the past, possibly would not be there for those people. Also, I have a do question, uh, as to whether or not, uh, I mean, the whole idea was to fill the Menards property with something. Uh, from what I understand, phase one is not going to be filling the Menard property. Uh, and in fact, it, uh, if things don't go well, that, that parcel may never be filled. Uh, so that's why I have questions about the whole project. I would, I would feel a lot better about it if the phase one was actually on the Menards property in the back versus, uh, where the proposed phase one is supposed to be. So, those are my questions and concerns.
You want to address that at all, sir?
Yes, and I hope I cover all of them. Let me start with the last one first.
Okay.
So we did contemplate, uh, it's a two-phase project, we did contemplate phase one being on the current grass lot, which was a former footprint of the Menards uh, building. We decided to move it forward, um, in order to establish this location as a residential location, you know, Class A luxury multifamily location, we needed to be closer to, you know, to Higgins. That's number one. Number two, uh, when we do contemplate phase two, and we do have confidence based on the success of Seasons and just simply the demand for luxury multifamily, uh, we certainly plan on embarking on phase two as quickly as possible once we lease up phase one. But we thought it would be less impactful to the mall and to the residents if phase two was in, you know, in the rear lot, in, in the back. So, but while we can't forecast what will happen in the future, we have all the confidence in the world to embark on, on, on phase two. Um, in terms of the impact, uh, for parking, we have our traffic consultant with, from K O L A here tonight, and they, they really studied everything, studied everything to the impact to the roads around, traffic signals, uh, certainly parking for both retail and for, for the residential. And it's, it's, it's our sincere belief that it's certainly just a, are just a benefit for the retail by having upwards of six hundred new residents. Typically younger residents who will patronize all, all these local businesses. Um, this is certainly, uh, the justification and the use case for our project at Yorktown Mall, where we had to dump, demolish the Carson's Box. Um, and then we're putting up multifamily in order to save what's there, that's, that's kind of the phrase we were using. Um, and I apologize if I didn't answer all of your questions, or at least attempt to. Um, did I miss one?
No, I think you did fine.
Okay.
I don't think you convinced me, but I think you did okay.
Trustee, trustee Stanton, the one thing I would add to in the conversations I've had with some of the businesses in that mall area, and certainly I have not spoken to all of them, but the ones I have spoken to have expressed to me anecdotally that they are anxious to see this push and project come to fruition, so they want to see the extra foot traffic from the, from the project. And they, they see that as an overall benefit to their businesses.
I can understand that.
Yes, trustee Arnett.
Um, how many parking spaces were, it was over four hundred parking spaces that we're going to be taking up? Or that we're going to be?
You have that.
Yeah, uh, the current site has three hundred, three hundred and thirty parking spaces, and the proposed plan is to have
Can you lift the microphone, chairperson?
Uh, the current site has three hundred and thirty parking spaces, and the proposed plan is to have four hundred and eighty six parking spaces.
And that's for both phase one and phase two?
Including first phase and phase two, yes. So the total would be four hundred and eighty six, and some of them have indoor parking garages too.
Ed.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, what we focus on it from the residential development perspective is the parking ratio. So how many spaces per unit? I can say with all confidence that all of our existing developments were most successful, or we are successful at about a parking ratio of one point two five. Um, parking spaces per unit, we're at one point four five for this development, including outdoor and indoor park, parking spots on site, so just on our property on the seven point two acre parcel. Jim Donahue, I think even went over personally to the Seasons Development to understand the utilization, so that's a Class A multifamily project, and he had noticed, or at least observed, that, and I think it's in the staff, uh, report, that, that their parking utilization, utilization is closer to one space per unit. And in fact, Seasons has larger, um, units. Uh, they have a larger average unit size, they even have three bedroom units. We only have studios, one bedrooms.
Two bedrooms.
And two bedrooms. So, the other thing I can say is I, we have to be, uh, correct on our parking ratio. We're not selling condos, meaning sell the condos and see you later as a developer. We're an ongoing operating entity owner who has to lease, or leases units for only one year. If residents come home after a long day at work, or wherever they might be on a Saturday, and they have nowhere to park, they're not going to stay at our property very long. So we know we can be successful at this parking ratio. And that includes, uh, we're building a podium, so that includes a, a number of spaces indoors as well as outdoors. And then we have E V, E V spots as required by, by the state mandate. So, but, but we're in the customer service business, we have to have full amenities, enough parking, nice units, or else we won't be successful. So, I know, I know this is the right mix, in fact, this is going to be one of our best projects.
I just, I want to make sure that, I mean, you have all the other events that go on in that, that plaza with, you've got the G T Fest, that's a yearly basis, which holds a lot of incoming traffic and I mean, I know this is going to take years to accomplish, but that's going to have a lot of foot traffic there too.
True, I, what I would say to that, though, is, number one, the parking, besides the developer having its own, um, study and consultant, it's reviewed by our staff as well. And we do have, um, the benefit of having Seasons that came in recently and looking at that. And by all accounts, that parking, uh, program, uh, which is parked similarly, is working just fine. The other thing I would say, though, although that parking lot does put on some community events, the, um, the goal, though, of those, um, the, the parking lots aren't designed for community events, right? They're, they're, they're designed to hold the parking, to support the businesses. So, ultimately, because there's been extra space, it has been, uh, we've been able to accommodate some items, right? There may have to be some adjustments. It's no different than out west on the twenty two acres, um, where we have a project that's going to come forward likely in the first quarter of next year for some multifamily, that's where we shoot our fireworks off. We're going to have to move the fireworks, right? So, ultimately, there is going to be some change and there will be some adjustments. We're a resilient community, I'm pretty confident we'll be able to, um, work through those items.
Okay, thank you. And yes, I mean, I know all the foot traffic would be great for the businesses in that complex, and it's probably long overdue for it, so.
Yeah, I, I hate going to Garibaldi's now because every time I go there, Steve asks me when this is going to happen, so I've, I'm holding off until this is approved.
Yeah, he's long overdue for that.
Uh, if I may add, the, uh, spaces that you are giving is one point four or five spaces per unit, or one point two spaces per bedroom. The Seasons is giving one point nine spaces per unit, or one point six spaces per bedroom. However, as you indicated, Jim Donahue, noticed that it was higher than the average, the actual demand was only point nine eight per unit, or point six three per bedroom. So, uh, you are correct in the sense that, uh, Seasons is overdoing it, and, uh, you are probably, based on their analysis, overdoing it as well, which is good.
Yes, trustee Newell.
Just, I just wanted to clarify, you said that there is some underground parking, correct?
It's not underground, it's on the first level, so it's a podium.
Oh, okay.
So, ground floor parking, some amenity space, and then residential units above.
Oh, okay.
You, you drive right in, but it's, uh.
Okay, and how many of those would there be out of that four hundred that you were saying, rough guess, just?
I think, I think there's eighty five on the, uh, phase one, eighty five spots inside, parking spots inside.
Okay.
Approximately, so first floor and podium, so.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure, because I kept looking at the picture and I couldn't figure it out. Like, I don't know where they're parking on, whatever, it's okay.
You're right, there's eighty six.
Thank you.
Yeah, eighty six, and then two hundred and eighty two surface parking lot with phase one.
Trustee Stanton.
Are those eighty six spots counted towards the four hundred? And eighty six?
Yeah, in the total, so it's inclusive of the surface and indoor parking on site, so just on our site.
What is the, uh, agreement, if any, for parking, uh, that is out there for non-residents, if they see a spot, you know, someone goes to Garibaldi's or some other location, and they actually see a spot out there rather than in close because it's already crowded? Uh, can they park in those spots, taking up what a resident might want?
Yes, it's actually contemplated in it, we're going to amend the declaration for the entire mall, because there's essentially a parking agreement for the entire mall access drives and what may have you for, for easements access. Um, and, uh, there's no specific, um, parking restriction either way, so. And if you think about it, residential parking is a little bit dynamic and at different times of the day than, than retail demand, and um, we've come to an agreement and a, a parking, sorry, a declaration to contemplate that parking, so no restrictions either way. So in that use case that you just mentioned, there won't, there won't be any issues.
Thank you.
Anyone else up here? Anybody in the audience have any questions or concerns? One once, twice, three times, I guess not. There's nothing else, do you want to call the role manam clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Canane.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, chairperson Chetwani. Move on to additional business. Hey, approval of an ordinance authorizing the execution of Lot Eight Redevelopment Agreement and the issuance of a TIF note for Lot Eight in the Higgins Hassle Redevelopment Project Area in the Village of Hoffman Estates, Illinois Higgins Hassle TIF. Chair, accept a motion.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
A second. With a motion, we have a second. Um, any questions on this? Seeing no questions, can you call the role manam clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Canane.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
I will say aye for this.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Move on to eight B, approval of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a TIF note for Higgins Hassle Redevelopment Project Area, except Lot Eight.
So moved.
Second.
With a motion, we have a second. Any questions on this one? See, you know, can you call the role manam clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Canane.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. H C, approval of an ordinance amending Section eight dash three dash twenty two, number of licenses of Article Three Alcoholic Liquors of the Hoffman Estates Municipal Code, Chair, take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
With a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on this one, or is reviewed earlier in the liquor commission? Seeing no questions, can you call the role manam clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Canane.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Chair, accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
With a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, we are adjourned.